Good evening. We are going to go ahead and call to order our Monday, October 10th, regular school board meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Board members, superintendent, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do. You have a revised agenda. It was done on October the 4th and October the 7th to add items 8.03, 8.04, and 8.05, and 10.04. These were added with the chairman's approval.
Thank you. We have approval of the minutes.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the executive session for collective bargaining, September 26, 2022, executive session for school safety, September 26, 2022, and the regular school board meeting, September 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So we are at our representation. We don't have any representation tonight, so we're at public input. I think we all start with Banks Helfrich. Take your time. You're fine. We caught you off guard.
Banks Helfrich, 9100 Sands Lake Road, Claremont, Florida. Madam Superintendent, aboard distinguished guests. Wake up, dress up, show up, follow up, and vote. Democracy works for the citizens only when the citizens are engaged. September 30th, vote by mail went out, and now many people in South Lake County and Lake County have their ballots who ask for a vote by mail. Some of them have already voted and sent it in. October 11th, which is tomorrow, is 29 days before Election Day, which is the last day to register to vote for this election cycle. October 24th is early voting. It begins the 24th, and it is 13 days. The last day is the Saturday before November 8th, which is Election Day. Yes, Election Day. I am here to encourage you all as leaders, as citizens, as family members, as people of the community, to engage others in your community to be a part of this process. Because, here's a repeat, democracy works for the citizens only when the citizens are engaged. So, wake up, dress up, show up, follow up, and vote. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Banks.
Thank you for the reminder, Banks. We appreciate it.
And vote for the .75 renewal.
Next, we'll have Brian Ross. Welcome, welcome. Either.
It's good to be here. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm here to seeking permission to take some students down for hurricane relief from Leesburg Construction Academy. Now, you'd think as one of the teachers at Leesburg High School Construction Academy that, you know, we teach these kids how to use tools and build things. And certainly, we do that. That's a big part of what we do. But I have this little motto I use for myself, so I don't get distracted from what really matters as far as what I do as a teacher. I mean, it's easy to get caught up in the meetings and the emails and the requirements of this, that, and the other, and the standards and everything. Not that those things aren't important, but I say to myself, you know, I'm building young people, and construction is just my tool. So that's kind of a guise to help these kids become the kind of citizens we want to grow up around and to be taken care of us when we're older. And few things give kids something to help them look outside themselves and to focus on something meaningful that matters more than they matter to themselves is, you know, this hurricane relief effort. I was in Naples this last weekend. I got home at 3:00 in the morning last night. I have a home down there that's fine. But I went down to the coast, and I met people who are just their house is a washout now, and they're trying to live in trailers because they have nowhere else to go that were flooded with six feet of seawater and things you can't imagine. And for these kids to see that, I know I was living down there during Irma, and my kids, it was life-changing. We plugged into the systems for volunteer relief, and my kids got to go all kind of places and see amazing things and people coming out crying because they don't know how to, they were going to clean up this mess any other way. And so it's really, really hard work. They'll work all day long, and it will be hot. But everything is provided. Safety is important. And if, I mean, I could go out and outline the whole thing. We want to do it right. Of course, we'll follow any rules, guidelines, get things in order. But time is of the essence because, you know, eventually cleanup stops. And I want them to be able to see it at its, I don't know, I'd like to say at its worst because, but I want it to be an experience that changes them. And I'm already in contact, and I've worked with them in the past, including last weekend. The organization's there that are keeping things in order. Safety, there's work crews. It's organized. People are calling them the 800 numbers. It's all organized on the church grounds of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And a lot of times, the police officers are coming there to find out what's going on from that location because they've got members everywhere, and they really got a grip on what's going on. But safety is important. It's very well organized. They won't be using chainsaws and things like that there. I mean, I could go on and on. I'm out of time about the things that may concern you, but that's what matters. If you have questions, go ahead and ask them. I don't know how this works. But we just want to do it right and keep them safe, but give them a life-changing experience.
Well, I appreciate you being here.
Is this the best contact number for you that's on the card that you, so, you know, I have lots of questions.
I'm sure you do. I would if I was you.
So if I could, could I call you tomorrow and get more information? And certainly need to talk to risk management and so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do for the program as well. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So we are on our superintendent's advisory committee report.
We have Jacob back with us tonight.
So this past Wednesday, October 5th, the superintendent's student advisory committee met, and again, all high schools were represented. The meeting began with a presentation by Mrs. Frances Selis, I always get it wrong, the executive director of Student Support Services about graduation requirements, and the group asked questions specifically about this year's seniors and the requirements for earning a scholar or merit diploma. Concerns were expressed about the FLDOE requiring our cohort to take and pass the Biology and Geometry EOC because we took this course during the pandemic, and we're exempt from it. But a lot of people are very confused about if we're exempt from the requirement. So we got that cleared up, and we are still held to that. We do have to take those EOCs to get those diplomas, but we are, we discussed best ways to support students who are going to take and pass exams, which includes a test prep boot camp, online resources, and we shared some ways that we can help to communicate the requirements and the testing dates and information to other students. So our main agenda topic was about how we as student leaders can help increase student engagement and school spirit. One specific discussion about, was about the importance of the youth mental health course requirement for all students in grades 6 through 12. So I talked to a lot of students, and we see it as a sort of virtual lecture. It's not very engaging to us, so we're going to start looking into ways to make it more engaging so that it can, I guess, come across a little better to a lot of students. Because the way it's taught, I know, kind of turns off a lot of students to actually taking in the information. So one of the main ways that we're going to look into that is through the You're Not Alone program. It better equips students with awareness skills and understanding needed to support their peers and truly improve mental health in a more interactive and interesting way. The mental health liaisons have been a great addition to Lake County schools as well, and students need to better understand their role and their training to know that they have an adult who is there to help them if they have any problems. So before our next meeting, we're going to each talk to our principals and figure out ways that we can expand that program in order to better use that for our students. So SSAC suggests that, to the extent possible, the district expand the You're Not Alone to more students and incorporate the program into the state-required youth mental health training for all students. So additionally, the SSAC discussed ways to promote performing arts programs and events that will increase engagement as well as generate more funding. And the group decided that this is an issue that's more school-to-school-based, more than district. So we all agreed to work with our student leaders and administration to find more ways to promote and advertise programs, as well as ways to expose all students to what band, course, and other performing arts programs do and what they offer students. For example, to various high school, what they do is during their ELA classes, they take their kids down to the auditorium, and they each get to watch a little part of the play that's going to be showed like the night of, so that they get like a little taste of it, and incentivizes them to go later on and actually see the whole show. So we're going to look into more stuff like that. And then additionally, we talked about the need to rebuild school spirit and, or need to rebuild school spirit focusing on ways to establish new traditions and ways to bring back traditions lost during COVID. We talked about pep rallies. They're very fun and something a lot of students look forward to. They don't really cost much, so that's probably our go-to for right now, but we're going to look into other ideas. Some of those include Fun Fridays where students can hang out and play cornhole and other games in the courtyard during lunch. Driving movies have been a big hit at several schools, and students who don't have cars can come in and sit on the lawn. Schools will look at ways to increase positive student interaction through things such as kickball games, flag football, and powder puff games. And the last thing we mentioned was ideas to make campuses more welcoming. We discussed how student murals and the painting of classroom walls in bright colors can make the schools look less institutional and just bring a little bit more joy into the place. Because I know a lot of kids feel like it's a bit of a prison, so we're trying to avoid that. So our next meeting will be held on November 2nd, and we will continue to share ideas for improving school spirit, and we will discuss recommended changes to the district's cell phone policy. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. It's a pleasure to have you as always. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
I think we have Carmen Cole and Batnax from the Education Foundation.
Madam Chairman, School Board Superintendent, thank you for allowing us to give a report. Apple Mart has had 313 teacher visits year-to-date, and we've distributed $48,200 worth of supplies. We are receiving $25,000 from Disney, which is the first time in three years. They've come back with their little grant period, and that, those dollars are unrestricted. We received $4,000 from the Mount Door Community Trust for a grant that we've written for for the criminal justice program at Mount Door High School. We wrote for a grant for $10,000 from Clay Electric for science equipment, and that's been awarded. We received $5,000 for cinnangers, irrigation for ag programs, and two of the ag programs that applied were at Mount Door High School in Lake Hills South. There's going to be a little bit additional funds left in that, so after the beginning of the year, we're going to reach out to our ag departments again. We received $20,750 for the outdoor construction classroom at South Lake High School from the Community Foundation of South Lake, which the board had already appropriated 25,000 of our ed foundation funds, which will be able to outfit Eustace High School's construction outdoor classroom. Golf tournament was a huge sell-out last Friday, and it looks like we netted over $75,000, much thanks to Hans and Kay Jacobson, ESI, Wharton Smith, and North Lake Electric for being our presenting sponsors, and they were joined by 22 other sponsors. Ren Fair, we have over 700 advanced ticket sales. We have dumbled the number of vendors from last year, and we have 1,300 students already signed up from Ed Day just from Lake County. Last time we did an Ed Day, we had students from nine surrounding counties. So we anticipate that we'll be host to surrounding counties as well. The Tech Stock and Children Campus Tour is October 20th. We'll be taking 40 students to Polytech and Hillsborough State College. Our audit is in a draft stage, and it goes to the Finance Committee this week and should be to the school board and approved by the middle of November. The school, or excuse me, the Education Foundation Board meeting that was canceled during the hurricane was rescheduled for this Wednesday, October 12th, at noon in the district office. And at that meeting, Judge Terry Neal will be installing our three new board members. Lauren Vasquez, who is an attorney at Macklin, Jimmy Adams, who is a project manager for ESI, and Mark Robert Swartz, who is a principal at Red Apples Media. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Board? No, thank you, ma'am.
No. That was 140,000 if you weren't at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson? All right. We are on a consent agenda. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.04.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we are on our school improvement plan for Mascot Charter School. I'm not sure who you want to invite up, or if we're just making your recommendations.
I see Ms. Cockcroft moving, so that's a good sign.
I'm not sure if Ms. Mayhew or if the charter president is coming. Thank you, Mrs. Cockcroft.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tiffany Mayhew, Principal Mascot Charter School. How are you? Good. So I understand you guys may have some questions in regards to our school improvement plan. So I am here to answer those questions and to provide you current status of our school improvement plan. Okay? In looking at our progress monitoring data from last school year, we use STAR Progress Monitoring Data. That data did not indicate the results of the FSA Spring Assessment, especially in math. When we look at our students in math overall, if you look at the performance from our progress monitoring assessment that was taken in April, our students were projected at 54% in grades 3, 4, and 5. And you can see that in the school grading system and accountability system, that actual was 43%. So with further analysis, and the results indicate to us an assessment alignment and practice in Tier 1 instruction. And obviously, with our third grade students, attendance did play a factor. But with that, we've put in an action plan that will increase our teacher capacity through professional development. Our collaborative planning has been extended. We offer collaborative planning now, an extra hour on Wednesdays. Our teachers are planning and preparing in addition to their planning that happens on Thursdays. Also, our continued walkthroughs with our curriculum and instruction team and our feedback is very important. We are partnering with Uncomplicate Ed and the Florida Constorium of Charter Schools for implementation, or with implementation of the best standards. We started that last year. That is continuing this year and with alignment to our new curriculum, which is Benchmark Advanced and Eureka Math. We also provide SOAR time because we are the Eagles, and our intervention and acceleration time is SOAR, Student Opportunity to Accelerate Reading and Arithmetic. Our ELLs, which is one of our subgroups, if you have looked over the briefing and the plan, our ELLs is one of our, we have a high Hispanic population, and our students need phonemic awareness and vocabulary to help them in learning language. And so we are using Hegarty Bridge the Gap as a program that will be, that's being used. We also have two ELL assistants in addition to several ELL teachers already on grade level. Our ESC teams are working, we're working through with the Science of Reading. And so with that, if our, we take these core assessments that will help us determine exactly what those students need. If it's phonics, if it's phonemic awareness, if it's fluency vocabulary comprehension, we have the different programs that the teachers are working with to intervene and help to move those students. Our biggest goal is really proficiency and achievement of our students in ELA and math, and that is going to be accomplished, and it is being accomplished with the implementation of those best standards, and like I said, with alignment to our new curriculum. If you, did you guys receive the brief with the data? Okay. So if looking at our current status, you can see where we are with FAST. That was the new state's Progress Monitoring Assessment in grades, with all the grades. But that shows, that Progress Monitoring shows where we are currently in relation to with reading and math with, as Mascot, Lake County, and the state. Also, I provided there because we have always used STAR Progress Monitoring at our school. We typically progress monitor five times a year. And so we are continuing in that process, not five times, but we will have it three times because that is, STAR is adaptive, and it tells us where students truly are at that moment in time. But when looking at the data that we provided you, that is the data that's used, that the STAR reports give us that indicate RTI. And it informs us of how the students, what type of interventions or acceleration that they need based on the alignment to the best standards. So we will, we continue to use that, and our teachers are planning and informing instruction through those, through those reports, and obviously through their formative assessments that happen in the classroom. With their instruction, they're using that to inform the instruction, pacing their small group instructions, and through intervention and acceleration instructions.
Board, do you guys have questions?
I have just a couple.
Yep. Go for it, Ms. Cunningham.
By the way, I am really impressed with some of the opportunities that you're going to provide for students. I like the after-school tutoring, the during-school tutoring. I like the fact that parents are being involved with parent academies and your open library night. Sounds like you got a really lot of good things planned. But I do have a question. On your Scientific Saturdays, what grades specifically are you targeting?
Right now, 3, 4, and 5.
And your academic boot camp, who attends that?
That will be in the spring as we prepare, as we see where students are. But that will, you know, we will look at second grade through fifth grade.
So you'll base the invitation on how they perform?
How they perform for the boot camp, yes, through our analysis of, of obviously STAR. And with FAST Progress Monitoring, as you know, it is based on grade-level standards. So if you look at the way, you know, what, the way we performed, I mean, and we're in alignment. We all are across the state and through the district. That's grade-level standards. I mean, that's what, if a fifth, we take a fifth grader, for instance, that fifth grader, that's where, they haven't been taught the standards yet. So that's where they're expected to perform if they were to take the test on that day. So obviously, we hope to, we hope to see that improvement in December when we take that next Progress Monitoring Assessment. But yes, going back to your question on the boot camp, that's who we will target, second through fifth grade. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Don?
Well, I've got some questions, mostly, I think, from the district side because, okay, so with Mascot having received a D, I think that that puts some obligations from the district to go in and do some walks. Is that right? And I guess I'm
That is correct.
curious more about what that process looks like and what that commitment is like for us. And I guess within all that, I see that you all use many different pieces of curriculum than what we use. And so how's that going to impact you all as you go in and walk this?
We, excuse me, we have, the state does not come in and monitor them as a D because of them being a charter. That's our obligation as a district. So we are going to provide a very similar model that the state does with us and do instructional reviews. Our first one is scheduled for November 3rd, and we'll take a team in there. While the curriculum may be different, the standards are the same, the expectation there. So we would be looking at the standards and what materials they are using to see, does it align with the intent of the standard? And where is the evidence in that for where the assessments that they're taking and things like that as well? So it's the same type of walk. While we know our materials better, it's easier to do it in our schools. We will have to take some time really looking at their materials because it'll be the first time that we see those in that same lens. So, yep, we have a team that's planning to go in on November 3rd for the first one. We'll do another one in the spring.
And this is a service that we're obligated to provide that we don't get compensated for. Is that right? This is not part of the menu of services that a charter school can purchase?
We have to provide oversight. We don't necessarily have to do it this way. We're designing this in the same model that the state does for us as a lot of other districts do too, when we have reached out to others. So no, we would not be compensated for that. Now, if they needed additional services based on those visits, because when we leave, we plan to have an action plan for them that they would follow based on our feedback from that visit that aligns with their school improvement plan, and if they needed additional services from us to do that, that's when the pay would come in, payment.
All right.
And if I can say something about with the UNISIC dollars that came into play, the amount that Mascot received, I think that, and I don't know if Mr. Ward is here, but he can correct me if I'm wrong, there is a percentage that stays with the district of those dollars.
And I think my next question is, I think, directed more towards you on the Progress Monitoring piece that you used prior that kind of delivered a surprise. What Progress Monitoring was that, that you were using?
It's STAR. It's exactly what, STAR Renaissance. We've used that for years. It's pretty accurate on reading. It was dead on. I mean, I'm gonna, we were at 45% with 3, 4, and 5 when we took that in April. That's where they were in reading. But math was 54%, and obviously, you see, we were at 43%. So again, when we've looked at that, there's pieces of that. Performance, instruction, Tier 1, assessment alignment, and practice with math. So that's where our analysis led us to believe, because it was not what we were expecting.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions.
Yes.
I know that there's a bunch of different, I know that you mentioned the programs. How many of those programs are new?
Really?
It was like Daily 3, Daily 5, and then
Daily 5, and yeah, well, LLI we've used for several years. Daily 5 and Daily 3 has always been at the school. We've just put the parameters in it to really, our teachers have used it. Half of them used it, half of them didn't. But to be able to inform, you know, their small group instruction and to have meaning and purpose with those standards and really breaking them apart to help meet students where they are with their individual needs. The other pieces with Hegarty and with Hegarty and Orton Gillingham. Our ESC teachers were trained in Orton Gillingham because of the assessments that they'll use. So that's a little new to them, but they've already, we've been doing literacy first and phonics for a long time, yes.
What about Eureka?
Eureka, we've been using that.
Okay.
We've used that. That's, that has not changed. Yes.
Are you concerned that you've been using that, and then that was the score difference?
Yeah, I mean, yes, we are, we are looking at that, and we are looking at, looking at a new curriculum in the future also. So, yes.
And then in regards to, I saw in here you guys were looking at essential standards and unpacking essential standards. I know you just spoke about that, so they know what they're teaching. Are you guys, are you limiting the number of standards so you can focus on essentials based on what the data looks like, or are you?
Yes. Well, we've been working with Uncomplicate Ed, and they break it down, and we look at MTRs. We're looking at what the essential, like with ELA, the expectations. And we are breaking it down into those pieces and how it spirals, spirals, especially in ELA with Benchmark Advanced. But yes, we, they are doing that, but with stacking of the skills also.
And reading and mathematics.
Yes, reading and mathematics.
Are you guys creating common formative assessments that you're using with those?
Yes, we have. That is one of the things we are working on, that we continue to work on. We've been a Title I school for years, and that's part of our practice anyway. Yes.
Okay. Good deal. I had one more question. I lost it.
That's okay.
I know you have some talented staff that have been with you for a long time, though.
Yes. My staff.
Some of them are very familiar to me, so I appreciate the conversation and the approach.
No, thank you.
While you're thinking, I have a question.
Please.
You mentioned that you use literacy first. Are you still receiving visits from a consultant? Are your school totally trained and you're just able to do it?
We're, we used it as the assessment piece, but yes, we're, our school's totally trained in using that. We're still using that.
Okay, so you're not having to incur the expense of a consultant?
No. No, 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 no.
And I remembered it, so I appreciate that very much. Are you, are you doing SOAR time for reading and mathematics, or are you just focusing on reading?
Yes, it's built.
There's interventions for math and reading, and this, these teachers are There's interventions for math and reading and this, those teachers are planning those intervention groups?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
The team, the curriculum instruction team, we look at the data every day and we're, we're looking to, to inform that, so yes. And then we, you know, we've, we've increased time on task too, so we changed school times this year. We start at eight fifteen. It was just a ten-minute differential, but it's made, it makes a, a big difference, um, in the timing, so.
Good, all right.
All right.
Ward, anybody else?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. Um, I, I, I think it's hard to hold the last two and a half years against any school specifically, but I think you've got a good plan in place, I think you've got a good staff, a lot of people showed up tonight, so thank you. Um, and I look forward to seeing a lot of growth over the next year, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school improvement plan for Mascot Charter.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, we have eleven oh two, I think, Mrs. Cunningham.
So the, the next item on the agenda, eleven oh two, is, um, required by state statute. Ms. Cunningham is the board representative, um, for FSBA and the joint FSBA Superintendent's Conference is taking place November twenty-ninth through December second, and by statute, she needs approval from the board in order to, um, attend on your behalf. And so I recommend approval of Ms. Cunningham to travel to the Florida School Boards Association Joint Conference, November twenty-ninth through December second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. All right, Superintendent?
We do have a few letters of condolence that were sent. Linda Barrington, she is the mother of Robin Fender, who's a fiscal assistant with us in Student Services, and she is the mother-in-law of Scott Fender, the director of transportation, so condolences to the Fender family. Also Roger White is the father of, um, Dinah White, who is a school bus video technician in our transportation department, so condolences were sent to her family as well. And, um, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mathias?
No.
Yes, Mr. Mathias. You didn't say anything, I'm like, am I wrong? Okay.
I first want to thank, uh, all y'all from Mascot to coming and Tiffany, especially you, you are an absolute leader and a hero in my eyes, so I appreciate you being here with your group. I do have to say, um, over the years, we've had opportunities where people all came dressed in red. They usually, they usually weren't that friendly. And, and for a brief moment, I had PTSD as I drove in. But I know with your leadership, y'all will get on the right course, so, um, I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Mr. Brandenburg?
All right, I've got a few things. Um, the exciting couple of weeks, um, for a couple of different reasons, but during the, the hurricane week, I got the chance to spend a significant amount of time at Leesburg Elementary and Leesburg High School, both those shelters. And really just wanted to highlight Leesburg Elementary, um, we were a special needs shelter over there. I think we ended up serving about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty guests. Uh, Principal Jordan and her team did a phenomenal job. Uh, the Red Cross was there to help, um, in a number of different ways, but just her leadership and how many times they've been through this, uh, just really showed, um, the, the guests had a great time, all things considered, being there, had a really good setup with a lot of different rooms set up for different family structures, and it just went really well. So I wanted to shout out Susan, um, her leadership team, uh, Mike Matheny from Church of the Lakes, uh, he and his church members continue to do great things in the Leesburg community. Uh, they were there throughout the storm, bringing water, uh, bringing different things, helping clean up afterwards, um, and just did a lot of good things there. A couple of other folks from the district I want to shout out, um, the head custodian at Beverly Shores, Brandon Hudson, was there the entire time. He and Craig Peters from the warehouse team at the district office were pulling weeds throughout the storm. They had that campus looking way better than before it started after the storm came through. Um, they worked tirelessly along with Leesburg PD. So I just want to shout out all those folks in Leesburg High School. Principal Randolph and his team did a great job at theirs as well. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend, uh, three or four of the elementary schools in Leesburg with the Leesburg Area Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Sandy Moore and her team do and adopt a second grade classroom program. Uh, we're local businesses and local community members, give money to help with reading initiatives and different reading efforts to really encourage our second graders to read, um, and read our, early and read often. Um, so we got to attend Beverly Shores, Leesburg Elementary, and Fruitland Park Elementary that morning, and the kids were really, really excited about this program, um, and I think it's gonna really pay off in the end, so I want to shout out Sandy and her team. And lastly, Carmen mentioned it, but I had a chance to play in the golf tournament on Friday, uh, one of my favorite tournaments every year. Uh, Scott Strong was a very dear family friend, um, and like a second dad to me, so that's always a fun one for me every year, um, and kudos to Carmen for everything her and her team are doing. So, that's all I got. Oh, one more, I'm sorry. Um, and wanted to shout out, uh, all of our Teacher of the Year, Rookie Teacher of the Year, and school-related Teacher of the Year, uh, award winners, a lot of really good folks and a lot of things to celebrate right now, so I wanted to make sure we got all that in there. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for attending those shelters and helping out. I know you were there working. Mrs. Cunningham?
I don't have a lot. I just would like to take a minute and say something to Mascot and to their administration. Um, I've been where you're sitting and I absolutely encourage you not to be discouraged. Uh, just because situation worked out that last year, you didn't get the grades you wanted, you had some progress monitoring that didn't work out, I know what that feels like. Um, I think you're doing exactly what you need to do. You've planned great strategy, you're looking forward to, you know, putting those things in place, and I seriously believe that you're going to be successful. So I look forward to the end of the year when we'll be celebrating, uh, that improvement and when you attain that A, so congratulations on your hard work. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mr. Don?
Sure, and I, I would just like to commend the district's response to the, the storm. The communication was outstanding, the, uh, cleanup obviously seemed to go pretty smoothly because we were ready to open back up on Monday and receive so many kids, uh, back and, and that's wonderful. Um, when I was out at Lake Point Academy one day, I couldn't help but, uh, admire their, um, the shade structure over their playground, and I said, see, that's why you don't just buy a tarp and hang that up, because that thing is still there after a storm, uh, so it's not just anything. Uh, so, um, big thanks to John Carr and his team for getting that even installed last year, you know, it was just like a scorching difference between the playground and the shade. And, and anyway, it's made a huge difference and the kids all complimented and are very excited about having a, a cool place to play, so, well done.
It's easy for me just to say ditto to everything that was there, but I especially wanted to thank you and your staff for handling the storm communication. I think that you guys hit the nail on the head with that and it was the, it was, it was right on target, so, and I know our schools were open and ready to go, and I know that it was nerve-wracking making that call so early, kind of put yourself out there, but it seemed like the right course of action, so we appreciate that and the, the communication